A Rundle Planning Board. I'm gonna start with a roll call on that side of the room.
Jens Bergen.
James Lowry.
Rich Canong.
Paul McGinn.
Tyler Liddley.
And right now, we have Roger Maron joining us through Zoom. And hopefully, the other two will join up shortly, and we'll let them know that they're here.
Rich, you're on mute.
I'm on mute?
You're on mute.
Oh, yeah, I know. I know, I am. But I should be picking up on the other laptop.
Do they hear you?
We should see if we're getting video.
Hey, Roger, can you hear me?
We can't hear him.
Speak up, Roger. Hang on, let me... You don't want this plugged in?
Wait.
Yeah?
Did he forget it? Somebody had your audio on?
Did you enable the audio?
There you go.
Yeah? Yeah, they set up.
Roger, can you hear us?
Can you hear us? You can hear us.
Yeah, you're on here.
Yeah.
See what happens when Susan jumps. Does she come in? No, no, that was me. I increase the volume.
Susan, can you hear us?
Yes, I hear you.
Okay.
Oh, here we go.
All right. Susan's in.
Are you going to be loud enough for us to hear them?
Little speaker.
Here, Robyn. Mr. Robyn.
You may have me out, Roger.
Okay.
Okay, okay. We just started.
You're gonna have to mute one of yours. Because you're gonna get...
Yeah. I'm gonna... I'm trying to mute this one.
Actually, you could do it with the remote. It's easier.
I've been doing this a lot lately.
For who? Do you have a remote?
There's a remote around here.
Yeah, right, yeah.
That's easier than this?
Yeah, it is easier. The remote does...
Whatever the min-max buttons are.
Okay, well, I have the...
Oh, yeah, yeah. Oh, there's a talented artist.
Okay, okay. Moving on. We have approval of the agenda. Which includes approval of the minutes of... That's the problem with having a tool.
You can't... You're gonna have to mute.
I can't mute? I can't mute? They won't hear me.
It gets better, Rich, when you turn that down. Got them there. Gets much better.
Yeah, I turned this one off. Hey, Susan, can you hear us?
Yeah.
Okay. Roger, you can hear us?
Yes.
Okay. So, we have approval of the agenda. Approval of the minutes for May 28, 2020. We have public comment. This is for those of you that have questions for the planning board about something that is not on the agenda, that you would like us to address, or if you don't understand something and you need an explanation. We have three public hearings. We have a public hearing on the land use ordinance amendment. We have a public hearing on Arundel Children's Garden, a major conditional use application. We have a public hearing on Weers Buick GMC Service Expansion. This says plenary site application, but this is a... This has already been determined complete.
For what?
That's okay. I'm just telling you what it says.
Plenary, yeah, it's a plenary segment.
Then, we have pending applications for the land use ordinance. Arundel Children's Garden. Weers Beach. Weers Buick GMC Service, all of which will require votes by the planning board. Then, we'll be looking at 35 DMR Drive. A plenary site plan review. And Raymond Acres, a subdivision and shoreland zone application. Under new applications, we have Monique and Paul Robitaille, a subdivision pre-application. And we have the Wellness Center. A plenary site plan review determination completeness. Then, we will be discussing a couple of land use ordinance amendments. A proposal to reduce the rear setback requirements for movable structures of less than 100 square feet in all residential districts. And we will... A proposal to establish uniform construction and dimensional standards for commercial driveways. And we will have any other business that the town planner may have, whether the board wants to bring up. So, I need a motion on the agenda.
I'll move to approve.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve. Now, according to the town manager, because we're doing Zoom, we need to have a roll call vote.
On every item?
On every item. We need to be able to record the roll call so that, for future reference, they'll all know that we agreed. And we didn't just steamroll over it, though.
Yeah, Yen says aye.
Jamie?
Jamie, aye.
I'm aye.
Paul, aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Roger?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Approval of the minutes of May 28.
Chairman, those minutes are...
The minutes are incomplete, so we will table those to a future date. Moving on to the public comment. Does anybody from the public have a comment they would like to make for the planning board? Yes, ma'am?
I had to bring this up again. The detailed stuff... At last, last agenda, you put a link with all the information. It was very easy to get to. I don't know if it's just because this meeting was... But there was no link. I didn't see one anyway. The land use ordinance revision, the open meeting tonight, I mean, the meeting that we're having tonight, it... There was no link to that, and you said to go to the website to get it, and it was not easy to find. It was a little tiny thing, but I don't have a problem like that.
Well, it's in the... It's in the land use ordinance revisions. It's in the planning board.
But it could also have a link in the agenda so that we can just click on and not have to go search for it. It shouldn't be that difficult to get information. And we talked about this. And not, like I said, last agenda, you did it, and it was easy to find. Everything was right there. I don't know why we went back to not doing it after one meeting.
It was unintentional allowing me to issue you. We did not put the Zoom meeting out there because we didn't know if we'd be allowed to have the Zoom meeting. So, for... I let the planning board members know that we were having it, but we didn't advertise it to the public because we didn't know.
Yeah. I didn't find out until this afternoon. The detail on the agenda. Last meeting agenda you had, a link set with all the detail.
Detail means the application.
Application, everything. Got everything on there last time. This time, we had nothing.
Uh, Rich, uh, would you also note that the date on days of agenda, it should be the 11th, but it says 10?
No, mine says June 11th.
Really?
Yep.
What is your say, guys?
That's okay.
There must be a gremlin in the machine. For those of you that could not hear, Susan was commenting that her agenda says June 10 instead of June 11. See if I can load that up a little bit and get a little bit better. Okay. Public hearings. Land use ordinance amendment. I'm gonna call the public hearings to order at 7:17. Land use ordinance amendment, a deletion of land use ordinance section 1.8.3.2.1(c) and 182.1d1. Citizen petition for amendment of the land use ordinance. We have this because we had a conversation with the town attorney. And the town attorney said it does not belong in the land use ordinance. It should be taken out in its entirety and allow the selectmen to do something, either with the charter or create a stand-alone. But she was telling us it does not belong in the land use ordinance. In the land use ordinance...
When you say "it doesn't belong," what is "it"?
The citizen petition section in the land use ordinance does not belong in the land use ordinance. The town attorney said we should take that out. So, we're gonna take it out. Hopefully, the selectmen will follow through with the charter, or they'll create their own. And if, even if they don't, the state statute still allows citizens to petition for any change to any ordinance. So, we're just following what our attorney said, which is why it is here. Yes, Linda?
Uh, so, we're looking to take it out before we have the charter changed. So, where does that leave the citizens who are looking to possibly need to change something as far as the land use ordinance?
The same place they've always been. They can still go through the process of creating a petition because the state law allows you to collect signatures on a petition. The standards were the same. The town attorney just said it doesn't belong in the land use ordinance.
So, this will change nothing?
It will change nothing.
It was redundant.
Redundant, okay.
What was especially egregious was the fact that we were charging for expenditures and so forth. And the planning board doesn't have that authority to do that. And so, that was a liability, a legal liability to the town. And if the town wanted to do that, they can do it through a charter amendment. But for us to do it the way it is right now is...
But the way that I had read it previously, the way I'm reading it now, is before, when the citizens signed a petition, they went through the whole thing, where they went to the town manager, and then they went to... And that was it. Now, it sounds like they do the same process.
Right.
But then, they have to go to the planning board.
Nope. Nope. You would come to the planning board for a public hearing.
Well, the selectmen send it here.
If the clerk...
You would submit the petition.
Says the clerk verifies the signatures are valid. The town clerk shall notify the board of selectmen and planning board of the proposed amendments for consideration. At the next meeting, the planning board shall then carry out other procedural requirements of that sort.
Which would be the public hearing.
Okay.
That's recorded by state law.
Just the public hearing?
Just the public.
Okay.
That's how it's hardly applied.
Does anyone else have any comments or questions related to this section of the ordinance? Hearing none, we will move on to the next item. Arundel Children's Garden. A major conditional use application. Proposal to operate a 24-child, four-staff daycare center in a 2,460-square-foot existing building known as The Grange, with associated parking in an existing four-unit apartment complex on a 2.53-acre parcel, tax map 39, lot 15, located at 34 Arundel Road in the Townhouse Corner District. Arundel Grange LLC is the owner, applicant, and Robert Metcalf of Mitchell &amp; Associates is the applicant's agent. And Mr. Metcalf is kind enough to join us in the back of the room.
Will you be able to see this?
Yeah.
Since that's some of these Zoom meetings, we have to get a headboard. So, again, Paul Metcalf of Mitchell &amp; Associates. And with me is John Fitzpatrick from Arundel Grange LLC. As you had indicated, this is an application for conditional use to allow the use of a daycare within the old Arundel Grange. That's where the Kennebunk Port and Pike shop had been in the since-what. There are no proposed major improvements to this. It'll be a daycare for 25 students with four staff. There's an existing four-unit apartment building in the back, which was formerly the dormitory for the Artwood College of Art. The only planned revisions that we're showing on here really is the detailed information for the required parking. Required parking of the total of 14 spaces. We're providing 19. The sub-surface waste disposal system that will serve The Grange was originally designed in 2004 as an update to serve a prior daycare use that was in The Grange and had 65 students and 16 staff. So, the system is more than adequate to accommodate for the 25 students and the four staff that need to do daycare. Again, and what we showed on the sidewalk before the last meeting, we're just showing the delineation, striping of the parking and handicap access to the existing ramps that comes up into The Grange. The delineating of parking in the back, where the dumpster is currently located, is the same location. Other than that, there are no proposed improvements. We discuss this with the board in terms of some of the ways that would be requested. And the one condition I know is in regards to the fire suppression system, which is... Rated, I believe, John. Is that completed?
Fully operational.
And that information will be provided to the fire chief as the board requests as a condition. Pretty straightforward. If you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer.
Just one clarifying. You're saying 25 students? Is that how many?
Uh, 24, excuse me.
Okay, this says 34 on the... Find it at the back. I don't know.
It says 24 child, four staff.
On number five. We can discuss that later, as well.
Oh, yeah, we can adjust that.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Can you... To the chair?
Yes.
They do have a declaration for expansion if they want to welcome parking and septic and area. Does it have additional capacity in all those?
Does the public have any questions for the applicant? Hearing none, I will close that hearing at 7:25, and we will move on to Weers Buick GMC Service Expansion. A proposal to construct a 2,941-square-foot expansion on the north side of the existing showroom. Amend the current parking layout and relocate site lighting for an existing vehicle sales and service facility located at 1513 Fulton Road, tax map 33, lot 2, in the DV1 and DV2 districts. Weers Motor Sales Incorporated is the owner and the applicant. I assume that means you, Ms. Linda?
Yes, Paul had to go to a funeral, so I'm on my own. And I got nothing. So, does anybody have any questions?
I have some technical questions about the lighting.
Okay. What?
Only kidding.
Oh. I was gonna say, we're just taking the lights and moving them to the side of the building. Is that what I think?
I'd like to know why you have nothing.
What? Oh, because I... Why I didn't have a... Because I had... I assumed it was gonna be a Zoom meeting. I didn't find out about this before, so, anyway, it's all good.
Okay, if there are no questions for the applicant, I will close that public hearing at 7:27, and we will move on. Item number one, the land use ordinance amendment. The deletion of the land use ordinance section 18321(c) and 1821d1, the citizen's petition. Does the board have any questions?
I'll move that we approve this, and we'll look forward to the selectmen. That's written. On second.
Motion has been made and seconded to move this to the selectmen for inclusion on the town warrant. Any discussion?
On second?
Oh, no, already got one.
Oh.
No discussion? All those in favor, start with Jens?
Jens Bergen, aye.
Lowry, aye.
Canong, aye.
Jen, aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Roger?
Roger, aye.
It is unanimous. Thank you very much. We'll forward this to the selectmen, and they can do whatever it is that the selectmen do with it, other than include it on the warrant. Okay, item number two, Arundel Children's Garden. Proposal to operate a 24-child, four-staff daycare center in a 2,460-square-foot existing building known as The Grange, with associated parking in an existing four-unit apartment complex on a 2.53-acre parcel, tax map 39, lot 15, located at 34 Arundel Road in the Townhouse Corner District. Arundel Grange LLC is the owner, applicant, and Robert Metcalf of Mitchell &amp; Associates is the applicant's agent. Ladies and gentlemen, what is your pleasure?
I don't have any signature pen entries or anything.
Yep.
Neither do I.
I'm one of it.
I think it's very important. Do we need a motion for that?
We need a motion.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded? Jens made the motion. Jamie? Jamie seconded it? Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Aye.
Lowry, aye.
Aye.
Canong, aye.
And Jen, aye.
And I heard in the background Roger and Susan both aye.
Yes.
You gotta read the findings of fact now?
Yes. Okay. Findings of fact and motion for approval. Whereas on May 14, 2020, the Arundel Planning Board received a major conditional use application from Arundel Grange LLC to operate a 24-child, four-staff daycare center in 2,460-square-foot existing building known as The Grange, with associated parking in an existing four-unit apartment complex on a 2.53-acre parcel located at 34 Arundel Road in the Townhouse Corner District. Whereas on May 28, 2020, the Arundel Planning Board conducted a public sitewalk of the project. Whereas on May 28, 2020, the planning board determined the application complete and scheduled a public hearing. Whereas on June 11, 2020, the planning board conducted a public hearing complying with land use ordinance section 10633. And whereas, the Arundel Planning Board has determined the following findings of fact. Findings of fact number one. The owner of the property and applicant is Arundel Grange LLC. The property is located at 34 Arundel Road, tax map 39, lot 15, in the Townhouse Corner District. The property is on 2.53 acres in size. The property currently contains two existing structures, one being the 2,460-square-foot Grange Building, formerly operating as the Kennebunk Port Bicycle Shop, and the second building serving as a four-unit apartment complex. The site is served by a large 24-car parking lot accessed by an eyebrow driveway with two entrances onto Arundel Road. Number five, the applicant proposes to convert the former retail store shop on the first floor into a child daycare center serving 24 children and supporting a staff of four caregivers. The upper story of the daycare building will continue to operate as a large, single-family apartment. The proposed use of a childcare center is permitted conditional use in the Townhouse Corner District. Number seven, onsite utilities include existing telephone, cable, and electric service. Water is supplied by a service connection from a water main on Arundel Road located by Kennebunk-Kennebunk Port Wells Water District. The building is also serviced by a separate, large septic system installed in 2005 and designed with capacity of 1,215 gallons per day. The occupant load is the proposed daycare center, and the second-story apartment is projected to be 690 gallons per day. Number eight, the existing parking lot, when restriped in accordance with the site plan, will provide two handicap parking spaces with one situated to provide ADA access to the daycare via a ramp. 10 parking spaces dedicated to the rear apartment building and the second-story unit, and eight spaces dedicated to the daycare center with three surplus spaces for expansion. Number nine, the eyebrow entrance will be dedicated for child drop-off and pickup in a counterclockwise motion with a queue capacity of seven vehicles. Site distances both to the east and west on Arundel Road meet the land use ordinance standards. Since the applicant is proposing no physical expansions of the property, the planning board has waived the requirement for a stormwater management plan. Number 10, parking lot lighting is currently in place, and no changes to the exterior lighting are proposed at this time. Number 11, the planning board has determined that the existing vegetative buffers to the west are sufficient to meet and exceed the buffering requirements of land use ordinance section 5952. Number 12, the Arundel deputy chief has submitted a letter to the planning board that the project is within 500 feet of a pressurized hydrant and is in compliance with section 57 of the Arundel land use ordinance. Number 13, the applicant has shown adequate evidence of right title and interest in the property. Informance with conditional use criteria, after due review and consideration, the Arundel Planning Board has determined the application to be in conformance with the criteria of section 929 of the Arundel land use ordinance as follows. 9291, that the use is compatible with and similar to the general categories of uses of neighboring properties. The uses and sizes of the structures are similar in scale and scope to surrounding properties and other land uses in the TC district.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve 9291. Is there any discussion?
Just a question. On each of these, we have... Were there eight of them? We'll have to do the full roll call each time.
That's what the town manager has indicated.
Okay.
Okay, so, 9291.
Bergen, aye.
Lowry, aye.
Canong, aye.
Magin, aye.
Susan?
Roger, aye.
Aye.
9292, the use is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the anticipated future development of the neighborhood in that the comprehensive plan encourages mixed uses in the Townhouse Corner District. Therefore, the proposed use is in conformance with the 2016 comprehensive plan.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Bergen, aye.
Lowry, aye.
Canong, aye.
Magin, aye.
Roth, aye.
Roth, aye.
Motion is unanimous. 9293, that there is adequate and safe pedestrian and vehicular access to and into the site to accommodate anticipated traffic to and from the use. The existing operation will not generate a significant increase in trip generation. The applicant's driveway site distance exceeds the minimum standards of section 521.1, and the applicant's queue strategy will substantially eliminate vehicle queuing onto Arundel Road.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Bergen, aye.
Lowry, aye.
Canong, aye.
Magin, aye.
Roth, aye.
Got them both. 9294, that there is adequate water supply and sewage disposal available to service the use. Existing onsite septic will exceed the proposed septic load, and onsite and water is provided to the site by Kennebunk-Kennebunk Port Wells Water District. The proposed use will not increase the demands for water or septic flow on the property.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Bergen, aye.
Lowry, aye.
Canong, aye.
Magin, aye.
Roth, aye.
Roth, aye.
It is unanimous. 9295, that there will be no noise, dust, odor, vibration, or smoke generated by the use that would adversely affect neighboring properties in that the nature of the business does not generate noise from outdoor children playing, but is sufficiently removed from neighboring properties. This is a residential neighborhood. The sound of children playing is standard. Odor issues will not generate any odor issues. Vibration and smoke, no vibration or smoke issues are generated on-site. Blair, the applicant is not proposing to add any additional lighting on-site.
No move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Maron made the motion. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Bergen, aye.
Roth, aye.
Lowry, aye.
Canong, aye.
Magin, aye.
It is unanimous.
Roth, aye.
Yep, it's unanimous. 9297, that the use will not constitute a public or private nuisance. The applicant has provided adequate documentation that no nuisances will be generated by the operation of the daycare center.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? All those in favor?
Bergen, aye.
Lowry, aye.
Canong, aye.
Magin, aye.
Roth, aye.
Roth, aye.
It is unanimous. 9298, that all other requirements and applicable provisions of this ordinance, particularly any pertinent performance standards, are met. The applicant has met all pertinent and applicable standards of the Arundel land use ordinance.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Bergen, aye.
Lowry, aye.
Canong, aye.
Magin, aye.
Roth, aye.
Roth, aye.
It is unanimous.
The chair, we've got seven planning board members trying to get on.
I sent them a new link.
Let's get the new link.
Therefore, be it resolved that based on the above findings and conclusions, the Arundel Planning Board hereby approves the conditional use application of Arundel Grange LLC to operate a 24-child, four-staff daycare center in a 2,460-square-foot existing building known as The Grange, with associated parking on a 2.53-acre parcel located at 34 Arundel Road in the Townhouse Corner District, subject to the following conditions. Number one, the applicant shall seek a certificate of occupancy from the code enforcement officer prior to the operation of the new use. Number two, parking lot striping shall be completed prior to the opening of the facility. Number three, the applicant... Number three, the applicant shall receive a sign permit, shall receive a sign permit from the CEO prior to operation. Number four, alterations of existing outdoor lighting systems shall be approved by the town planner and code enforcement officer. I believe there was, wasn't there something about getting the license application to the state of Maine?
Yes.
Can't operate. Okay. So number five, the applicant needs to receive her permit from the state of Maine Health and Human Services before she begins operation. So approved by the Arundel Planning Board this eleventh day of June, two thousand and twenty. Need a motion?
Make a motion, move.
Okay.
Roger.
Bergen.
Roger made the motion. Susan, seconded it. All those in favor?
Bergen, aye.
Lowery, aye.
Ganong, aye.
McGinn, aye.
Warren, aye.
Aye.
Yep. It is unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I do have plans I can leave with the board aside.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
It was a hot day.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Item number three. Weir's Buick GMC Service Expansion Plenary Site Plan Determination and Completeness, a proposal to construct a two thousand nine hundred and forty-one square foot expansion on the north side of the existing showroom, amend the current parking lot layout, and relocate site lighting for existing vehicle sales and service facility located at fifteen thirteen Portland Road, Tax Map thirty-three, Lot two of the DV one and DV two districts. Weir's Motor Sales Incorporated is the owner applicants. Does the board have any questions for Ms. Linda? Anybody?
To the Chair.
Yes.
I received a proposal from Latvy Excavating today. I'm going to make a cost estimate for the proposed physical improvements on the site that are part of the application. I would recommend that you accept that and the usual ten percent contingency that is required in the settlement.
Okay, so we should do that first before we read the findings of fact? Accept this agreement? Does it require us to do anything?
No.
Oh, okay.
It doesn't because the applicant, the applicant is providing us evidence of the surety, the cost of the surety that's required.
I was surprised at how much it was going to cost.
Really? I thought it was going to be a bigger number.
Did you? Okay. We will, we will move on. Findings of fact and approval for, motion for approval, Weir's GMC Buick Service Expansion. Whereas on March twelfth, two thousand twenty, the Arundel Planning Board received a plenary site plan free application from Weir's Buick GMC Service to construct a two thousand nine hundred and five square foot expansion on the north side of the existing showroom, amend the current parking lot, and install site lighting for an existing vehicle sales and service facility located at fifteen thirteen Portland Road, Tax Map thirty-three, Lot two of the DV one and DV two districts. Whereas on March twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty, the Arundel Planning Board conducted a site plan of the property and advised the applicant as to the additional submissions that would be required in a plenary site application. Whereas on May twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty, the Arundel Planning Board received a full plenary site plan application and after review determined the applicant to be, the application to be complete. A public hearing was then scheduled for June eleventh, two thousand twenty. Whereas on June eleventh, two thousand twenty, the Arundel Planning Board conducted a public hearing of the project in accordance with section ten, six, three, three of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance. And whereas the Arundel Planning Board has determined the following findings of fact. Findings of fact, number one, the owner and applicants are Weir's Motor Sales Incorporated. Number two, the property is located at fifteen thirteen Portland Road, Tax Map thirty-three, Lot two in DV one and DV two districts. Number three, applicants have provided adequate evidence of right title and interest. Number four, the site consists of twenty-five point two seven acres and consists of an existing showroom and attached service facility, a car wash and collision center, along with vehicle display and customer and employee parking areas. Number five, the applicant proposes to construct a two thousand nine hundred and square foot service facility expansion on the north side of the existing service facility, rearrange parking, install drip edge drainage facilities for the roof runoff, and install additional lighting. Number six, the site is currently paved and no increase in pervasive surface will be created. Number seven, the proposed facility is currently serviced by onsite septic site utilities and public water provided by TKWW Water District. Number eight, the applicant proposes to install a drip line storage trench at the eve of the proposed expansion and discharge the treated and detained runoff directly into a small wetland located on the east side of the existing parking lot. Number nine, the applicant has received a letter of compliance from the Arundel Fire Chief. Number ten, the applicant has submitted an application to the main DEP for a minor revision to an existing site location development permit and is awaiting a notice of decision. Number eleven, the applicant has provided the fifteen parking spaces for employees and customers as required in the land use ordinance section five, twelve, three, five. Number twelve, the Planning Board has determined that existing landscape and buffering facilities meet the screening standards of land use ordinance section five, nine, five. Number thirteen, the applicant is proposing to install luminaire type double E LED shielded wall-mounted lights over the bay doors. Photometric mapping confirms the resulting lighting will be in conformance with lighting standards in land use ordinance section five, ten. Number fourteen, the applicant has provided an adequate plan for sediment and erosion control. Number fifteen, the applicant has submitted a cost estimate from Latvy Excavation in the amount of twenty-four thousand two hundred dollars. Number sixteen, documentation of proposed improvements is contained within a site plan set titled Site Plan for Weir's Motors dated May fourth, two thousand twenty, and prepared by Paul Gadboy PE Architectural Plans and Elevations for Weir's Buick GMC prepared by Graham Architects dated April second, two thousand twenty, and a site plan packet prepared by Paul Gadboy PE. Informance with site plan approval criteria. After due review and consideration, the Arundel Planning Board has determined the application to be in conformance with the criteria of section ten, six, four of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance as follows. Number one, the proposed project conforms to all standards of the zoning district and meets or exceeds performance standards specified in sections five, nine, and ten of this ordinance. You don't have to vote. We don't have to vote on this one? Oh, good. Number two, the proposed project has submitted applications to the main DEP for a minor revision to the existing site location permit and is awaiting DEP response. Number three, the proposed project does not unreasonably impact public safety and fire protection and will not create a financial burden for the town of Arundel in the provision of emergency services and law enforcement to the project site and the neighborhood. Number four, the proposed project will not have an adverse impact upon the quality of surface or ground more than resources. Number five, the proposed project provides adequate stormwater management facilities to produce no additional peak runoff from the site during the twenty-five year storm event and will not have an undue impact on municipal stormwater facilities or downstream properties. Number six, the proposed project will not have an adverse onsite and offsite impact upon existing vehicular and pedestrian circulation systems within the community or neighborhood. Number seven, the proposed project will not have an adverse impact upon environmental quality, critical wildlife habitats, habitats, marine resources, important cultural resources, or visual quality of the neighborhood, surrounding environs, or the community. Number eight, the proposed project will not produce noise, odor, dust, root, layer, solar obstruction, or other nuisances that will adversely impact the quality of life of surrounding parcels. Number nine, the proposed project will have a positive fiscal impact on municipal government. Therefore, be it resolved that based on the above findings and conclusions, the Arundel Planning Board hereby approves the plenary site plan application of Weir's Buick GMC Service to construct a two thousand nine hundred and five square foot expansion on the north side of the existing showroom, amend the current parking lot, and install site lighting for an existing vehicle sales and service facility located at fifteen thirteen Portland Road, Tax Map thirty-three, Lot two in the DV one and DV two districts, subject to the following conditions. This approval is subject to the issuance of a revised and updated main DEP site location permit. No work shall be performed until these permits have been supplied to the town planner. Number two, the applicant shall submit a performance surety in the amount of twenty-four thousand two hundred dollars plus ten percent contingency in compliance with land use ordinance section ten point seven prior to the issuance of a building permit. Number three, all soil erosion control devices shall be installed prior to the commencement of site work and no site work shall be shut down for the winter until all required soil stabilization mechanisms prescribed herein are made effective. Number four, prior to the issuance of building permit, the applicant shall submit to the town planner something.
Yeah, strike that.
Strike that, never mind. So number four will actually be no certificate of occupancy shall be issued until the code enforcement officer receives certification from the design engineer that all improvements have been completed in accordance with the approved plans so approved by the Arundel Planning Board this eleventh day of June, two thousand twenty. Now I give the motion.
Move to approve.
No move.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Bergen, aye.
Lowery, aye.
Ganong, aye.
McGinn, aye.
Warren, aye.
You know. It is unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for putting up this good. Do I need to send something to Marty?
Oh, he's not having success. He hasn't shown up. You want to try one more time?
I will try him one more time. We're going to take a five minute break and I see if I can get the other planning board member in. And I need some air.
Good seeing you, Joey. Good seeing you a while.
I know. I've seen you great. So, looking well off.
Well, busy. A lot of work going on.
Are you guys back in the building?
Not yet. There's a couple, there's like many people I think in the building. We're supposed to start slowly moving people back in starting on the twenty-nine. So I'll be going back. So the option to work from home, which is good.
Yeah, so how's that going to work? Are they going to be more flexible going forward or are they already?
They weren't that flexible before, but going forward, they will. It's going to be so difficult listening to them, the way they got set up, you got to wear masks if you're not in your office. We have these like workstations outside the offices where people use their layout drawings and you can't have any more than one person at home, so it's like, how can you even conduct business here? Can't use their conference room.
How do you, you know, the things you do with large plans and people need to look at them together?
Exactly. We got to do Zoom meetings and like, you can do that from home, you know. Like me, so anyways. I think they're a little too concerned, you know, but this is fully modify the planning, I think, forward.
Yeah, don't figure it out. Even in our little place, you know.
Yeah.
You work from middle. That's the most like now, like the grocery store. And so you got to go that way, you know. You step out and people are like, just don't come on their own way.
Exactly, yeah. They're going to do something like that in our office, you know. Which one?
Was your son still home?
He's still home, yeah. NASA hasn't opened up yet, so he doesn't know where he's going. But the way they're setting it up, he's going to be able to, I think maybe go like for a couple of weeks and then work from home. Most of the stuff can be done.
Have you been working shopping, like anything?
No, I've been working on the house mostly.
Really?
Yeah. Working on my deck, rebuilding my deck. I had a bunch of rot in the house, I'm pulling that out.
Did you just come back?
Me, yes.
Okay.
Why?
Because I looked a minute ago and you weren't there, but I didn't see you come back across them all of a sudden.
I just, I'm
She kind of hides in the gray.
I'm pretty amazed by that though.
She turned sideways and disappeared.
There you go. Yeah, this week. When did we start back in the office full time last? This week. This week or last? Great, last week. No, this week is the first full week. It just seems like two weeks.
You got everybody in there?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, no more shifts. And you know, like I said, we have the path one way and masks if you're out of your office. Those are our masks.
We're back on the record. Thirty-five DMR Drive, Plenary Site Plan Review, Determination of Completeness. A proposal to construct a four thousand two hundred and fifty-one square foot metal building complementing an existing three thousand four hundred and forty square foot commercial building on a two point eight three acre park site located at thirty-five DMR Tax Map, one lot, one D in the town district. Gary Martin is the owner and applicant of Amy McNally Esquire is the applicant's agent. So, do you have?
Would you like me to move up a little?
Yeah, you can.
The board wanted an update as to what the plan was for the encroachment, is that what I understood?
That is correct. What is, what is the plan that you have currently?
Sure, so last meeting we talked about two options. One would be access up Route one or the other would be deeding the encroachment and fee to the abutter. So, in the meantime, I kind did explore the option with DOT to enter up Route one. That permit was denied. There's three hundred and fifty feet needed for an entrance separation, so that was denied. So, he has, he is amenable to deeding the encroachment area to the abutter. So I have drafted a deed to that effect using the plan and I have that for the board if they like it, but that would be the plan and that, you know, we'd be amenable to making that a condition of removal.
That was one of the two options, correct.
Is there, who's responsible for me deading the route?
My understanding is that Mr. Martin and Mr. Cole have just always, you know, co-op, been cooperative in doing it, so those are the two that use it. And so it's been a good arrangement so far. It's been pretty amicable and I think Mr. Martin would like to keep it that way.
And they've both been there a long time.
That's correct. That's correct. Yep, yep. There haven't been any issues. I mean, obviously this is the first time it's come up. It's been encroaching on his property for some time and he hasn't hasn't been an issue.
So what effect will this have? You're going to transfer the right of way to whom?
The, the encroch, the area of the encroachment, so it's really just if you look at the plan, that, that small crescent piece would go to the abutter who owns the land under the easement. So in the event that there were ever to be a standalone easement in the future, it would be one owner, which my understanding would be the, the board's preference, the last time we spoke, as opposed to taking it from multiple owners. So, that was the discussion I understood from last meeting. My client, obviously he explored the alternative. He was unable to do that. He has taken on the other option that he was given by the board.
Would that affect anybody else's frontage?
It would not. It's just going to expand the easement, the, the, the abutter's air or land into my client's property, essentially. Yep, it won't, no one's, everyone has the same access that would otherwise have a
But they'll, but they have the same access, but will they have the same, same amount of frontage on the road?
It's not, it's not on Route one. It's, it's only my client's boundary on DMR Drive that's effective. So this is Route one here. Sorry, it's rather small, but the only piece that's being deeded out would be on the boundary of DMR Drive and the northeast really boundary of my client's property. That's it.
But it won't, it won't affect, he'll, he'll still meet the requirements for the frontage?
Oh, yes, that's correct. The step back was adjusted for the building and everything to accommodate that, yeah. Oh, yes, that's correct, the setback was adjusted for the building and everything to accommodate that, yep.
Right, that's, that's what I'm trying to make sure of, is that it's, he'll have the proper amount of, of frontage on, on DMR Drive, and everybody else will have the proper amount of frontage. Is this? I'm just curious, is, is Atlantic Storage gonna have anything to do with this?
To the chair, I'm sorry, that's smart transportation.
Oh, I'm sorry, smart transportation. Are they gonna have access to the road, are they gonna be doing anything with it?
I, I don't think they use, I don't think they use it for access, they just own the land under it. It's only Cole and Mr. Martin, from what I understand, actually use the access, cause the storage has their own entrance off Route One.
Yeah, yeah, it does.
Question, what about Stocktown, Mr. Raymond?
They have access on Old Post Road, from what I understand. In any event, I don't think this would change the access, cause the only thing he is doing is giving property to the property owner of the easement, so that the, the actual easement itself is unchanged. The access, the easement is a right to use that land. My client wouldn't even have the authority to, to do that, because he doesn't own the property under the easement.
And Mr. Smart is okay with this?
That's my understanding of it. My client is okay with this, with this, amenable to this, most certainly.
I think it solves the issue.
Okay, I, I just wanna make sure it doesn't create any other issue. And that, that was the whole thing about the, the frontage and, and whether or not.
And the easement rights still apply to whoever had it already?
It's not affecting any of the easement rights.
Yeah, the encroachment is solely onto the Martin lot.
Yeah.
I don't believe there's any expansion potential for us to do. The issue is, we've got a non-conforming.
Oh, yeah, we do.
Yeah, so, that could affect future development of other people.
Is there, is there development potential at the back?
There is, there's one, there's one lot that is standalone lot that has not been developed. Mr. Cole owns it right now, and he has expressed interest in it, and don't leave again on it, but I'm not sure what that status is, and I guess, play with it, have to take this one step at a time. Cause what we have is, we've got a situation where we don't have a maintenance agreement.
Right.
We have a.
A direct line, but not a.
We don't have, we don't have a maintenance agreement, and it's sort of like kicking a can, but I don't think we can.
But that's how we ended up in this position, because prior planning boards just kicked the can down the road, somebody else will deal with it.
I think what happened was there, when I could tell Mr. General, it was saying, there was a driveway that was living in that, where lots were basically built off, and then it was never really created, it was always, it should have been. I went through from Old Post Road to Route One, and I'm not sure what happened in there, but there was, there was easement, but there was no road. The road was never created with the right of way that was separate from the adjacent lot, which is required for a road.
Now, but wasn't what was created, if I understand.
The history gets very fuzzy somewhere in between, I don't know how that happened, but that's what happened, yeah. So, we don't have a maintenance agreement.
The, the maintenance agreement kind of troubles me, because if the two principals get into an argument with each other, who's gonna fix the road?
No, that'll be, oh, again, and there's, there's a, there's a prior positive action there, too, between the two of them, to compel that.
If they, if Mr. Cole develops that piece of area in the back, they're gonna have to roll up on a written maintenance agreement that includes everybody on the road.
And then I can imagine that they would be amenable to doing so, and my client certainly will. He, he has wanted to take the path of least resistance, so that he's not upsetting the abutters, that's his motivation right now. He can't control what they're willing to do, but I think if she was on the other foot, he would certainly come to the table and agree. I mean, it would be essentially memorializing what they've done historically, so I don't think it would be a giant issue on the road if that were to come, from my understanding of the dynamics.
And, and, and if, if he decides not to, and he sells it, then they're gonna have to sit down with everybody on that road and hammer on.
That might be an inevitability, I mean, that might be a reality, or, you know, I've seen it go one of two ways. I've seen it be very, you know, conflict driven, and then I've seen it just kind of meander on by agreement, so.
Well, for my purpose, I guess we'll just kick that can down the road, cause the next time it shows up, but at some point, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to face the issue instead of what's gonna happen in terms of, what are we gonna do with this road that is illegal right now, that is not performing.
Not confirmed, okay.
So, if the board were to do that, then the next action would be formally accept or deny that option, and then we can move on with the review of the plan. I could do the stormwater stuff, cause I don't wanna do that till we know what's gonna happen here. And you're gonna submit, I, I would suggest the applicant would submit a revised plan, you've already done the deed description, right?
Correct, you, essentially using the plan, it's not meaning bounds and.
But you'll, you'll, but you'll submit a new plan that shows us the new lot, right?
Sure, we can do that, yeah.
And with the setbacks, and correct the deed, and I'll do the stormwater, and we go from there? Oh, one thing you do need to do, have you talked to the part sheet?
Yes, I have, I sent you a letter, I have a copy if you need it.
Okay, yeah, I'll probably do it, I'll see if here, that's. So, I think that's an exclusive action, once I go that way. But I'll continue from there, I'll do this if you're ready.
Well, I'll make a motion that we accept the option proposed.
Which I believe is option number two, the proposed easement solution acknowledging the DMR Drive as a non-conforming private lane that serves more as a commercial driveway?
Now, please, the applicant should convey the encroachment area representative of the original proposal even in the adjacent lot, known by the Chip Corporation, which is John Smart, which is Lot F, one.
Oh, okay, so you're, you're up on the.
To the DMR road right away.
Okay.
That's the option.
Okay.
We have a second, I'm sorry.
I have a second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the applicant's proposed solution? Any discussion? Or any more discussion?
Why did we, why did we reject it on the twenty-third?
I think we were waiting, Roger, to see whether or not they could have an access to the property through Route One.
Correct.
Yep.
Is that right?
Yes.
And I'm sure if they don't have enough frontage?
Yeah, actually, I remember that, okay.
They can't have the access, so that illuminated that option.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded, any other discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Ergen, aye.
Lowery, aye.
Canong, aye.
McGinn, aye.
More aye. Rock, aye.
It is unanimous. Now, the next issue, we'll be to get all of the plans and the letter from the chief and all of the other.
I'm sorry, I found it.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah.
Just the stormwater.
Just the stormwater, peer review, and an updated plan is all to make the application complete?
Yep. And once we have that, we'll be able to schedule a public hearing and proceed down the road.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Don't go away.
I know, I'll grab them.
Item number five, Raymond Date Your Subdivision Amendment and Shoreland Zone Application. A proposed amendment to alter the approved property line between Lots five zero three and five zero three A on Tax Map thirty, as well as a reduction in the seventy-five foot Shoreland Stream Protection setback from Rock Mill Brook Tributeary on Tax Map thirty, Lot five zero three A off of Black Dog Road in the R two and S two districts. Nicholas Raymond is the owner applicant, and Amy McNally is the applicant's agent. We're up again.
Good evening, um, well, again, we just had that, a site walk this evening, through the board members of the board was able to see the site. Um, in, last week, we did submit an updated narrative for the board's consideration after last meeting. The board had raised a couple of issues, first, just wanting to confirm that this intact is the, the correct body to hear this request, and we've outlined that there. Um, under Rundle's ordinance, we do believe that, it doesn't explicitly say, I'm going to go to the ZDA, and we believe that the board does have the authority under Chapter Eight, so we've outlined that in that letter. Um, happy to take questions on it, but essentially, under the section, this board does have the authority to make special exceptions to reduce, um, of encroachment to a buffer of less than seventy-five feet. In this case, it would be a reduction of about nineteen feet, um, so it's still more than the twenty-five feet minimum. Um, and we believe that there's a section at point that is, allows for that in special or unique circumstances, as we've highlighted, but that special or unique circumstances is not necessarily defined in the ordinance, and when specific terms aren't defined, essentially, you kind of apply the common definition of that using common sense, using some context, and we believe that the situation that we've outlined for the board, the historical context, the physical context, the, at the situation at the site that some of you have viewed, would most certainly consider as special or unique. Um, so we do believe that that fits this scenario, and the board does have the authority to reduce the setback, and should do so under this circumstance. Um, there's a couple of things that were raised at the site walk that I wanted to address is that, I think there was a board member who had encouraged whether there's a legal remedy against the contractor, right? In this context, there was a contractor who had essentially made the mistake, which resulted into where Mr. Raymond is right now, obviously outside of his control, so it's not necessarily the responsibility, a whole set of unsophisticated circumstances that led him where he is. And so, the legal remedy, the question, the answer is, potentially, there's recourse, but through the court system, and that process, the delay could be years, particularly given the backlogging courts in the, in the midst of the COVID, COVID nineteen crisis. So, Mr. Raymond's in the middle of getting financing, and so that is just an impractical remedy for him right now. It could be a viable one, maybe years down the road, which is impractical at this moment. So, I did want to address that, that yes, there could be legal recourse, however, the timing of which is, is really problematic in this circumstance. Um, the also, the other concern that I've heard from board members is that this might open up some sort of floodgates for, you know, the, an opportunity for someone to build outside the envelope, then come and ask permission from the board afterward. And I just think that, that the board has to consider that you are a fact finder, you are the gatekeeper here of what circumstances fall under special exceptions or special or unique circumstances. And so, just because you analyze a circumstance under a certain set of facts and a certain set of historical context and find that this situation is special or unique, doesn't mean the next time someone builds outside of the envelope, it's going to fit that same scenario. So, I really think that the board should pause and, and position themselves as a fact finder to really look at the detailed facts of the circumstance and decide whether it's special or unique before dismissing it outright by saying, if we do it this one time, we have to do it the next time, which isn't necessarily true. You're a fact finding body that would address these circumstances as they arise. And so, again, we, we think, given all of the circumstances and historical context, the situation that gave rise to the issue that we have the cost of hit inhibitive and the environmental impact of actually physically moving this building, this house that is well under construction, would really run contrary to the purpose of the ordinance, particularly as, from an environmental standpoint, so. I did want to address those two issues in addition to the narrative letter that we did provide to the board. And again, the applicant's here, and Mr. Doe is here, who has created this, the landscape plan that, again, adds to the remedial mitigation efforts to minimize the environmental impact of the current encroachment, and obviously obviate the need for any further disruption of the buffer. So, we're here to open for questions, if the board has any, or for how much discussion.
Does the board have any questions? Take it away.
Sure. Do you have an understanding of what led to the misfortune? How did that happen?
Yes, we do, and Mr. Raymond.
Yeah, so, what happened, we had set the, we had this plan, and we had set the stakes up and the boundary lines of where the, the river setback was, and then a sideline setback. And, so what happened, they ended up needing to take more trees, and they had fallen on the stakes, and we believe they had re-put it in, thinking they were correct, but we have no way of proving, you know, how it happened or who did it, is partially the problem.
This was the plan, yeah, that we used with the contractor to locate the house. You see, the house is almost facing that road perfectly. We made it from the telephone pole of seventy-five feet, we made it from the boundary down here, we had it placed perfectly within the line, in the lines. We left, and the contractor had a conversation with his excavator, we all left and went to work, and made a hole. But when the hole's done, it's a big wide trench, all the fill comes out, and they place it on both sides of the trench that was over the other pins that you wouldn't see. But what caused those pins to get messed up is, the excavator on its own decided there were a few more trees in the way, and he took down them, when they dragged them, the excavator, and zoomed a pile over here, they knocked the pins out and stuck them back where they thought they should go.
And they also used the boundary pin where it seemed.
And they used the boundary pin instead of one of the foundation ones, so it diagonally twisted the, the house. So, if you look at how it's set on that lot, reference to the pond and the road, that's how it should be if we turned it, that's what they ended up doing with the trenches. The house is about fifty percent on where the foundation was, but when they turned it, they kicked this corner too close to the stream, and kicked that corner over the other boundary.
I see, okay.
Anyone else wanna? You guys already saw it.
Went and drew it last week, got rolled up.
I don't know if you saw that.
Sure.
Actually, over the way.
They were, yeah.
This is where the house is, the tank, and that's where it had to be turned to be in the boundary.
Has a, has a notice of, of claim been submitted to the contractor?
It has not, um, and that's, that's something that the applicant has, you know, have not done, so.
We were just worried that if you do that, they're gonna go to their insurance company, they're gonna go to their lawyer, and they're gonna contest who said what, who did what, and it ends up in court for years.
Oh, I know. Seems to me that, I mean, there certainly should be insurance coverage in place for the excavator, for the contractor, and.
I don't.
Those guys.
I generally don't see insurance companies just sitting down and saying, oh, yeah, I'm right of track. We're going through right now with the boatyard, we had a storm damage in December, and we still have a good faith.
They sent down three different people to look at it.
Three different adjusters come down, and, you know, we don't know.
They all said it's fine.
This, this project Nick's been trying to do for about two years, and he's obtained financing from Norway, and it expired, they had to redo it, and it expired a bit of time, but he redid it a third time, and now he's done it a fourth time, and it's about to expire, and we're concerned that, knowing some people that were certainly creditworthy that have gone to that same bank and other banks to get loans, banks are kind of putting the brakes on a little bit till we see where this COVID thing goes on, we're worried about, too much time passes, he's gonna lose his financing. And if we're tied up in court for two years, I don't know what's going to happen.
Financing, obviously, would be required to move the building in the interim.
Right, yeah.
If, if that was the remedy that was decided upon, financing would be, I mean, it's costly, so there'd be financing need to be required to do that, or settle. And so, I think that that's where that, all of those issues kind of come to a head for Mr. Raymond, where that's why he's here. That's why he's making this request, and that's why it is, it is, it's very weak, and it's, it's very unfortunate. That's where he's. He's not unfamiliar with this board, so he's, he understands that it's not the path of least resistance, it's, it's not, you know, it's a, it's a serious issue, and, you know, he has, you know, made all the requirements to get to where he was.
Let's move it, yes, they would have, we had the cough with the building moving down. They would have to fill a whole bunch of wetland, cut down a ton of trees to be able to get under the thing and get it moved off enough to destroy that foundation and do a new one. It would do more damage and far more damage than what's there, I mean.
With the ordinance, it's, yeah, protecting what, what you could obviously mess up, but
I can understand why you'd be averse to litigation, anybody, the hell he's, mindset ought to feel that way. But, I don't think, I don't think these are mutually exclusive groups. Seems to me that in any event, a notice of claim ought to be submitted, it ought to be submitted right away to both entities and their insurers. submitted right away to both entities and their insurers. And, you know, if nothing comes of that, then nothing comes of that. I don't think that would be the case, because neither one of these insurers want to have claims out there unresolved, and they can figure that out among themselves. If the homeowner is not to blame in any respect, they're going to be, I think they're going to be far more focused on resolving and moving on, given those issues of subrogation or contribution between themselves. That's, that's just my thought.
And I don't disagree, I just don't know if it solves the issue that we're here for, where the current circumstance that Mr. Raymond finds himself in, where he has a half-built residence and is unable to get financing to move forward to complete construction, is unable to get financing to move the building, and his hands are tied by, you know, filing a notice of claims, it would be a step, but the unknown timeline for that litigation, the hands are tied there too. So I certainly don't disagree with, with that theory, I think, you know, that's, it's a valid legal point for sure. I guess I just don't know if it, the remedy there is, as you said, it's different, being compensated for the loss.
Yes, Susan.
So I agree with Jens that you should file and seek a legal remedy, because right now, all of the, you know, eggs seem to be in the planning board's basket, and whether or not they're going to show mercy on the current situation and allow it to be considered a special exception. So I think in good faith, the builder and the excavator should be put on notice that you're going to seek a legal remedy, so that you're going to look everywhere to be made whole. That said, it's not as terrible as it sounds, because I feel your pain, and believe me, I want to find a way, and I may have in my brain, for you to be able to keep the house where it is and make the changes that you suggest. But it's not the board's fault that the loan expired, that the house was built in the wrong place, that the builder is a good guy, and the excavator's a good guy, you don't have a construction liability policy, it's going to take years, blah, blah, blah. That's really not the board's problem at the bottom line.
And I, I, so, and I don't disagree.
But, so the only thing I would say is, if you argue that the ordinance was not specific enough, and that you felt that CAD would have to, you know, agree or disagree or, you know, provide evidence for his point of view, that the ordinance should be made much more specific and state that it really only applies to special circumstances as they relate to environmental issues and not to mistakes or building problems that occur on site after the fact, then perhaps with CAD and the town's agreement and the board's agreement, we could find a way to give you your exception and change the land use ordinance language so that there was never any misunderstanding going forward for anyone else. I mean, that would be my remedy. And it's really CAD's and the rest of the board's interpretation of what the planning board meant and intended, but maybe didn't specifically say in the ordinance about what are the circumstances that allow for a special exception.
Tom, so, the way I see it is, the planning board has two choices, either, either to deny the appeal or to approve it, it's all we have. And so it's a difficult situation, but, and I, I agree with you, Susan, we need to do something going forward, but right now, we have to deal with what's in front of us. I think the punishment needs to fit the crime here. I think for, I, I can't imagine why you would intentionally shift that over by a few feet. I see it as, as a mistake, honest mistake along the way. For us to deny, would require litigation, which you can do or not do, it's up to you. We can't tell you to do that, but you'd still, if we denied you, you'd still have to pick up the building, move it, do all the fill, cut some trees down, and, for what? To move it, what are you talking, eleven to nineteen feet? It, which is, to me, that, if I was a punishment fit in the crime, that's way overboard. So I'd like, for me, I'd like, it, it was something that's hard to undo, and, and you're still within, if you had come to us and said, we would like to do this, we could have made that exception.
From the, right, before, right.
So, so it's still, you're not within twelve feet of the river.
Right, it's not out of the possible order.
Back at fifty-two feet.
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six feet, so you're still within that, that acceptable range. So as far as I'm concerned, I, I think it's something we, I would feel right about just, just making the exception and allowing it.
I agree with Tom. I think the nature of the encroachment, where it's, where it's essentially the corner of the building is shifted and made a triangular portion, like an acute encroachment, is, is much more, I feel like with that word, palatable to allow the exception that's provided in the ordinance, to be able to, from a practical standpoint, allow that encroachment, and instead of all of the disruption that would occur if you made them, you know, dig that out, rip it up, and replace the house in a, in the different, in the original location.
Thoughts on it, Roger?
I got along with Tom as this fairly saying. Have no additional comment?
I, I, on the, the other hand, disagree completely. I don't believe that we should do anything. The applicant came to us, we, we didn't even have to look at the shoreline zone because he had space in which to put the house. He had adequate space, the fact that his contractor screwed up means he has a case against his contractor. It does not mean, in my opinion, that we changed what that plan was. We put the buffers on the stream ordinance and the shoreline zone specifically to prevent people from going into wetlands area and doing something. When, when you say that the punishment needs to fit the crime, in my opinion, the punishment in this case is you move the house, you put it where you originally said you were going to. I don't believe that it took the contractor one day to put that foundation in there.
Well, they dug the hole in one day and poured it to the deck, but we worked, I mean, it's not like I went over day to check on what the progress was, I mean.
That becomes, and I don't want to sound cold and heartless about it, but that becomes your problem. You should have been looking at it to make sure it was done correctly and in the right place. The fact that it became a self-inflicted wound is not, in my opinion, a special exception to, to the ordinance.
Well, thank you.
I wouldn't characterize it as a self-inflicted wound, in fact, of anything. I think that it wasn't self-inflicted, it was a third party. In fact, it was a third and fourth party. So to me, I mean, I think, I think Tom addressed it eloquently, and, and I also concur with Susan's point. It's a, it's a tough thing for us to do, but I think that, you know, I think it seems to me it falls within what is otherwise undefined bore in the, in the definitions of, of, of the ordinance.
Okay.
And prospectively, I mean, I think we can be led by Susan's suggestion to look at defining those terms, so that this doesn't happen again to somebody else. Having said that, though, I don't think insurance carriers ought to get a free ride on this unless it's forgiven.
Oh, I'm, I'm in total agreement with you on that, yes.
And that's very, well, I mean, the, the applicant will, will.
And that's, that's the other avenue of resolution to this problem.
It's not mutually exclusive.
It's not. It, it won't solve, I mean, that would just result in money, it doesn't result in a solution to the setback.
If we, I, I would take the, I, I'm not a lawyer, I never even played one on TV, but I would make the argument, if I were the, the builder, I would make the argument in court that it didn't cost me anything, yeah, I built it in the wrong place, big deal, it didn't cost anything, I don't have to pay any money back to the, to the applicant, I don't have to move the building, I don't have to do anything. So there's no.
But also, what about the environmental impact you're having of moving it potentially? Now, for just, you know, nineteen feet, you're to protect the thing.
It's fifty, it's fifty percent of the building that is in.
Well, not, not, it's about a third of the building that's in the shoreline zone. The other side is not the shoreline zone, it's over, that's the sideline, it would remedy that.
If there's an impact on the land, it's, it's an impact on the land of the owner. So I think he does have a damage that, that endures beyond.
And that's an argument that, that you have to make with the judge to, to come up with a ruling. I'm just saying, if I were the contractor, I'd be making the argument that, well, there was no damage. He got his house built, and, and he, he didn't have to suffer any consequences.
Through the chair.
Right, because you're looking for the planning board to remedy.
That's right.
They're not looking for the contractor for the remedy, they're looking for the planning board to remedy the issue.
And, but you.
On the other hand, as well, is we can't set a precedent.
Hang on for a second, Kat's got something.
I, I have, I guess I have to play the heavy in this, because I, as, as, as your advisor, I have to tell you a few things here, we have to, we have to clarify.
Ash, can you talk up?
Sure.
I can't hear you.
Okay, I think that, that, the, the problem is that we're looking at the, when you, when the planning board did this, and this isn't easy for me to do this, but I'm going to have to do it because it's my job, but the, when the planning board decided that they had a, a, basically, a discretionary ability to change the buffer, that discretionary ability that had been discussed, and Jamie was part of that discussion, was that it had to be an environmental factor. That environmental factor would be, as you did with another situation, where the, you had a reverse slope, that the drainage from that site would not have an impact on the wetland, that you wouldn't get into the wetland, that the wetland, or the, the stream, the integrity of the, of the buffer was maintained. It would just be very unique circumstances, perhaps it would be a situation where you have an existing issue with an existing house, but that it was not to be used for any other purpose than for environmental purposes. And what's happening here is the unique circumstances that Amy's talking about, that warrant a special exception in the, in the shoreline zone includes financial hardship. And financial hardship has never been part of the shoreline zoning process. That's something for the ZBA. They determine whether or not something's a financial hardship, not the planning board or not the shoreline zoning. And I think there's some important things we've got to remember about the shoreline zoning. This isn't a local zoning ordinance, this is a state mandated environmental protection ordinance for the purpose of protecting the environment and achieving certain environmental goals that the state has determined for a long time to be of critical nature. It goes beyond the town of Rundle, it goes beyond property owners, you know, certainly zoning, the way we do zoning, is intended to preserve property values and enhance and protect a person's property rights. Shoreline zoning is actually kind of confiscatory in its nature. Its intent is to take property rights away in order to benefit a better good for the general public and for a greater, greater population. And as such, it's a little different. And what, the big question that I think I have to ask is if the legislative intent of the shoreline zoning was to protect the environmental factors, and the intent of this board had originally been to provide exemptions in which the environmental factors were not compromised, then you have to ask your question, are we, are we bleeding over and treating this as we want a normal, a normal subdivision or a normal zoning situation in which we provide relief for a situation in which the owner has found himself into, no fault through his, no fault to him, although, you know, that's, that's, that's really the issue. I mean, you know, the, the use of a special exception for providing relief for shoreline zone violation as anything but for environmental purposes was rejected originally by this board when you wrote this. And it isn't discretionary thing on the board, but I will, I will tell you this, that one thing that I am concerned about is that the area that you're talking about was originally intended to be on your plan on your HHE 200, and that was supposed to be stripped anyways. That's where the system was going in, that's where the building was going. So that area that is shown in your HHE 200, this is where you were going to be developing, which is part of your submission, which gave the planning board, which is why they gave the permit for that lot. And so I'm not sure I really, I can, I can subscribe to the fact there's more environmental impact by going to those trees that are on the upper limit area than it is continuing to have that slope that we've got there and the, the encroachment into the shoreline zone. Remember, the, the one other thing I do want to bring up in the process, it's, it's not good timing, but we should recognize also that according to right now, there's a Kennebuck River watershed study that's ongoing right now. Unfortunately, this, the water testing is proven that Goshen Brook is compromised. We have some significant amount of, of basic pollutants, a lot of it is, apparently is, is e. coli that's coming down in the watershed, and we are probably going to be having to do something about this in the future. So maintenance of these setbacks is going to be critical for not only protecting the watershed, but also probably being state mandates in the future. So the other, I guess the other point that I kept noticing again and again is that we've got more than nineteen feet clear out there. This encroachment includes the clearing beyond that, the deposition of fill, you know, I believe that Doe and I were discussing how we could stabilize that thing. And then, of course, the concern about what's going to happen in the future for maintaining that buffer that's going to be so critical in that area between this house and that wetland and that stream, to ensure that the water is filtered correctly from the, the state and the town objective. So that's essentially, I guess I'm being Mr. Cold Shower here, but I have to, I have to basically inform the board of these, these factors.
On that point, so would, the requirement of doing some additional planting in the clear area, would that mitigate some of the issue here?
Well, I think that's, that's where I've, yeah, I think you would be required to mitigate it anyways. If you, if, if there is any DDP, I was reminded of this by the shoreline zoning officer today, that it doesn't matter, because we're going to have to mitigate, the applicant would have to mitigate in any case. If they moved that building, they'd have to mitigate, they'd have to do a two-to-one replacement of vegetation, and we're going to have to mitigate one way or the other. So there is mitigation.
We have a plan submitted, Jens, I don't know if that's.
There is, but I want to make a point for the board that, that this is, basically what I've already said, that this is, as, as difficult it is to say, financial hardship is not one of the factors that should be considered.
And I could speak to that. I guess, first, the ordinance doesn't specify what can or cannot be included when you're considering a special or unique circumstances. So we put the financial hardship in there as part of the puzzle, it's one of the many pieces when we're looking at the context of what happened here and what would be required to fix it and the environmental impact on it. So it's really just a checklist of what makes the circumstance unique or special. It's not all inclusive in the financial hardship. That's one purpose of it, because it's going to delay fixing the problem if that were to be the solution. So again, it's one of, it's a multifaceted kind of checklist of what makes it. So, um, again, it's one of, it's a multifaceted kind of checklist of what makes it special or unique. It, in and of itself is not the lone factor. Um, just to, just wanted to speak to that. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Comments by anyone? There we go. Ladies and gentlemen, what's your pleasure? We, we do still have, uh, more to go through. Do we not need something else from them? Because this is supposed to be under the shoreline zone. What is that one?
Yeah, the, the, the one thing from a, from a procedural standpoint, I think we, we can't do this under the unamended subject. We have to do this as a shoreline zone.
Okay.
And we're gonna have to follow that process, which means we have to have a public hearing and do the site plan process. So we'd like you to quickly put together an application, shore zone the application, pay the fees, so I have the money to advertise it all. So, uh, we meet all those obligations and depending, no matter what the decision of the board, we are an appeal to the procedure that, uh, matters.
So before they go forward and do that, should we take a vote of the board so that they've got some confidence that they, they can move forward?
We can give it up on ten seconds, but I don't think we can take a vote. I think a vote would be binding. And we don't have, we don't have the application. We don't have anything.
I get it, but I mean, out of.
Yeah.
Out of, in concept, that way, if, if five people say no, they're not going to go for it, then it's a waste of their kind of an effort to, to move forward.
Okay.
Yeah. We just force our opinion, you know?
Right.
So can someone recap what we're voting for, uh, trying to last here? Jamie?
Thank you, Susan.
It, it won't be that where.
I'm just wondering what we're talking about here.
So we won't be taking a formal vote, but what we'll be doing is just, um, expressing our thoughts individually on which way to go, just to give them an idea if it's worth pursuing either way. That make sense?
Oh, we're about to lose Zoom. Why? My batteries are dying. I didn't, I didn't bring the plug. I didn't think I needed it.
Because the batteries before we charge.
Before that happens, can we get a?
Yeah, can we get a consensus?
Jens.
Yeah, okay. Um, I, uh, I'm always grateful for our planners' insights and guidance. And I thought, particularly so tonight, when, when you reviewed in the, in the staff notes for us. I thought, uh, how, what a quick presentation was for us. That note was standing well. I, I think I'm, I would be supportive of the, of the relief that's requested.
Jamie?
I concur with Jens.
Tom?
I, I do as well. I, I, I think they should pursue whatever the remedy will see.
I'm only supportive of the relief if we can find a way to close the door behind them for future discussion when other issues arise that are non-environmental. If we feel the language is vague in the ordinance and that, Amy, Amy, can I call you Amy?
That's perfectly fine. Thank you.
Okay, um, and that, that's the argument that Amy is going to pursue. Then she's the first one to the party. She gets to claim it. And then we make the correction and then ever after, there's no misunderstanding about what the language of special exception actually means. Now, Ted can say there really is no, uh, equivocation and the language is clear. Um, I would defer to his judgment and our town attorneys. But I want a way to close the door behind them so that this doesn't happen again.
Agreed.
I would agree with that.
I mean, that, and then I would say, uh, yes, go ahead. But if we don't have a way to close the door, I would say no.
Roger?
I'm gonna call him with that.
I don't understand that vote.
I'm go- yes, I go along with that.
Go along with?
Go along with what?
He's in a, he's in a.
We don't have a way.
As long as we have a way to protect ourselves, that we're not setting a precedent, everybody's gonna come in line to try to claim that they had, uh, special exemption.
That is, that's not, I, I have to disagree with both of you. I don't think that's an issue for us to vote on in relationship to the ruling. That's a decision that we make as a board by changing the ordinance. It has absolutely nothing to do with this application.
So perhaps on Jens, maybe you can help with this too. And maybe Amy should look at the language and get sage advice as to whether or not the language is actually vague and should be reconsidered. But, I mean, as it stands right now, I don't think if the board, uh, can find a way to, uh, stop this from happening again, um, I, I don't know how you vote for it.
Well, I think the.
I mean, I want them to be able to get the special exception. It's a heartbreak that their house is really largely done. But I also don't want to leave the door open for others to follow after them.
If, if we as a.
In fact, it's because our ordinance is vague.
But if we as a planning board do not take that on, then it will not happen. But in this case, it has nothing to do with the applicants. It has nothing to do with them. They, they are operating under, under the, the standard that, that is in there.
No, but Amy's asking for a special exception.
That's right.
And she's claiming that the language is vague. So I would say to Amy, prove it.
Well.
The, the way to prove.
Correct it and then move forward.
Susan, the way to, the way to prove it is to, no, the way to prove it is to deny it and let them appeal to the ZBA as to whether or not we reach the proper decision.
Okay, then I'll do that.
We'll let them have the facility.
So I guess I, I, excuse, my argument in my letter, to address your point if I haven't already, is that I think the, the, the term is undefined and so it is vague. And I think that's where I kind of prefaced my, my presentation with this, it's the board's discretion to really define it. Um, and so it's also the board, you know, the, the town's authority to change it down the road, but not in the context of this application. For this application, the board must use what's in front of them in the ordinance.
When, when I used what is in front of me in the ordinance, I looked back at the discussions that were, that were had that were of an environmental nature. And that qualified before the building was ever, ever started. If you had come to us in the beginning and said, we're going to encroach in the shoreline zone because we have to, there's no way we can build otherwise, that would have created a special exception. The fact that you could put that building there and it ended up in the wrong place does not constitute a special exception for me.
Okay, for you. And I was just gonna ask, what does special and unique mean? And if we go around, we're gonna get different answers.
Where does special and unique come from? Where, where, where does that come from?
That's a good question. I guess we'd have to look into that and know.
Yeah, and I, I agree. We would all end up with different answers. I'm just telling you, this is my position.
So I guess I want a little bit of clarity. I, um, I hear that Jens is supportive, James is supportive, Tom's is supportive. Susan, is, does that change your, your kind of instinct there?
I do what? I'm sorry, Amy.
As far as supporting, I guess I want to be clear. We, we're trying to get an idea of moving forward is going to be a process and we want to make sure that, that, you know, we're doing it properly. So, did, did I hear that you are supportive of it or without an ordinance change preempting it, you wouldn't be supportive of it?
Through the chair. I, I'm a little worried here that the planning board is prejudicing its decision.
Okay, that's perfect.
I think the council would agree with me. We're kind of like overall lying here that I'm worried that, that.
Okay.
I guess the question is how confident would, would you be in submitting, we're gonna have to submit a so- shoreline zone.
That's what I, and that's what I.
Yeah, you should submit a so- shoreline zoning so you can get a final answer.
Right.
And the, the board's getting, I think you've already gotten it, Phil, for what it is.
Most of the board.
Thank you.
Most of the board, yeah. Well, yeah, but, but if we go, if we go for a vote right now, what essentially is a vote, then we are prejudiced in any of this decision we make in the future. And it could change. Um, but I, I think I'm concerned that we would be accused of that at this point. And I would just soon have a procedural error no matter what.
So you have, you have guidance?
We do.
Um, well, we have a number of directions. Meanwhile, moving on to the end.
Yeah.
Make your argument. Use eight, six, three, four. Consider when we use the one that's going, it's, that's a real operative.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
And then there's another one that.
Ted, the way I, the way I read that is eight, six, three, four essentially references the exceptions in eight to four.
Eight, six, four.
It's, it's one of them, yeah. I think, if we look at, if you want to take the references, you show the references, you guys approve of special exception.
I, I understand the fact that it's not the way that we messed up.
Which is going before.
Idea's able to stand anyways. You should hold us up beating that guy with the enable that you can do that for.
Susan, Mariah, if we, if we lose you because the, uh, like the batteries on my computer died, you'll know why.
Okay.
But we're fortunate. We have a quorum here in the room.
Hey, can I just, last thing, I promise. Uh, can I refer, if I get an application in, it'll be ten days until the next meeting. That'll be on it. Perfect. Right.
It's a fourteen day submission.
It's up to you, the board.
In one of the ordinances, it says up to ten days beforehand, but I've referenced it a few times with previous meetings.
That would be what, Monday?
The form's on.
Yeah, we can do it.
Just take anything you've done already.
Yeah, just put it on the form. We can get it done. So we're just hoping to get home this next week. Thank you so much. Thank you very much. You're having time. Appreciate it.
Okay, next item. New applications, Paul, Monique and Paul Robitaille, subdivision free application, proposal to subdivide an existing combined residential and commercial facility into three residential units with associated parking and driveway by a four point four acre parcel, tax map seventeen lot fourteen, located at seven fifty seven Limerick Road in the R one district. Monique and Paul are Robitaille, the owners and applicants.
Yes, I am.
There you are.
I asked, yes. Uh, basically all this is, is, uh, we were hoping and applying for a third unit. Excuse me, we have the Snazzy Petwood at the point of this, on the street. And we got plans for a third unit and that's the only thing that we, we, we don't really have an issue with, but we have a right of way over, over the public property. So we have to do the whole, you know, have to make, make it work. And we are gonna go to the border if, if that's what. This is an easy one, I think, to be honest.
I don't think it's easy, Paul.
You never know. We can do these things.
Yeah.
First thing we need to do is, is to schedule a sidewalk to go out there and take a look at the problem.
Uh, Mr. Robitaille did submit some more information today.
Okay.
Uh, and I think that'll be important to take with us on the sidewalk. We also, and he also said that you're planning to put in that driveway to Maple. Maplewood Drive is that correct? That, that.
According, uh, according to Callas, I see.
Yeah, that, this one, the, the right of way that you got up to.
That's correct.
That's correct. So.
Yeah.
So the issue of thi- this is no longer an issue.
That's an existing one.
Okay. But this is no longer.
And it's not why not. But we're working with, uh, a neighbor of the front seat that sells us an easement. We'll boot by from there.
I think in my staff notes, you noted that, uh, there are a number of these issues that have to be resolved. The applicant has more than enough, uh, uh, parking space, isn't it? And, uh, there's another area we have to do, uh, a, uh, net residential density, because this has to go to subdivision. This has, this is a minor subdivision. Has to be a minor subdivision because, uh, as soon as, when the problem is adding just a third unit, it will, it automatically first of all makes it a multifamily, which is a condition used in a subdivision. Uh, the, the thing is that the applicant, as I said, as I said in my notes, the applicant has a single family home and a accessory apartment in this building. And he wants to add a third one in what was one, what was a panel. And he's converting that over to a residence. The issue is that a, a accessory apartment stops, ceases being accessory when it's out, out of a single family home. So we have to consider that a third unit. That is actually the first two units of the single family home and accessory dwelling. And now the additional third unit makes it a, a three unit project, which is a minor subdivision. And, uh, so that's why we have to go through the subdivision process. And, uh, it is minor, so it doesn't have to go through preliminary and then final. The applicant is, is in a pre-application process and we will go through a sidewalk and determine what submission requirements he'll need in addition to the terms.
So, that is the twenty fifth?
Twenty fifth, the.
Thursday for the sidewalk?
Yeah, six, what's that? Six, six thirty, that's six.
Thank you.
Very, very close to here, isn't it? Right down the road.
We, we might want to look at that. Do we need to do a, do a sidewalk at the Wellness Center?
Yeah, we need to do one there too.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna end up with two sidewalks that day if we do open at, uh.
Is it twenty fifth?
Yes.
So I would, I would propose we do this one at six thirty where it's closed by.
Okay.
If we're ending up at here.
Agreed.
Yeah.
And then we could do the Wellness Center if that one plays out.
Okay.
Huh? We may not end up at here. We may just kind of straight zoom here.
So then. Either way.
Doing the sidewalk and then probably.
Rich will be closed up.
Me.
That's all that matters.
To do in the office.
But yeah, I, I do think it would be better to do this one at six thirty and then do a wellness.
My guess is this will be a, a brief one.
It's a, yeah.
It's a brief one.
The site's pretty, pretty easy. There's no real, no real other improvements are necessary. The finding, the net residential density, of course, the access, the access is also to be, be issued.
Somebody want to make a motion for it?
I move we have a sidewalk at six thirty PM on June twenty fifth. Second.
Motion been made in second for a sidewalk, June twenty fifth at six thirty. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye, pardon.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. It is unanimous. We will see you in two weeks at six thirty.
Forty six.
Twenty five. Twenty fifth.
Fine, that's Thursday.
Thursday, I will send you a notice.
Paul, where, where is it? Paul?
Right down here. You know where the Snazzy Pet is?
Oh, it's Snazzy Pet.
Yeah, it's got Snazzy Pet. Okay.
Thank you.
Next item, the Wellness Center, plan and re-site plan review, determination of completeness. A proposal to expand an existing parking lot serving two commercial structures by approximately fifty one hundred square feet at one thousand nine and one thousand five, four, remember, a four point one eight acre parcel, tax map forty three lots fifty two and fifty two A in the DB one and RP districts. Elizabeth Boucher is, is it Boucher or Boucher?
Boucher.
There you go.
Get the answer.
There you go.
Well, I know people that say Boucher. I know other people that are going voucher.
I say that.
Or Bush.
Or Bush. Yeah, I had a friend, John Bush.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, at any rate, Elizabeth is the owner of applicants.
So, uh, you know, we remodeled the farmhouse next door to the Wellness Center. And, uh, the first floor in the front, uh, portion of the building is commercial. It's an eight hundred and ten square foot office space. So we're looking to expand parking lots to accommodate the renter there.
I'm Tom Shonin. I'm here as an agent for Mr. and Mrs. Boucher.
I'm sorry, your name, get them.
Tom Shonin. And we brought those pictures because if we thought it made it clear that the existing parking lot is in somewhat of a depreciated condition, so they, they want to just repave that existing parking lot.
But part of this parking lot was never paved for starting. We have pictures going back to two thousand sixteen that show it was grass.
Correct. We're looking at just the existing, the existing drive, the existing parking lot we're repaving. But if you look at the pictures that show the three car garage.
Yeah.
You can see where. You can see where that's the driveway to the, to the house. And if someone wants to go from the parking lot and drive into their garage, they just drive over dirt right now. And you're right, that has not been paved before. And so that portion of repaving under other parts of the statute needs to be connected to paving for adjacent property. So they just wanna, you know, as part of the repaving, there is an expansion, and that expansion part is majority for that driveway to serve those three garages.
So there'd be some, uh, reconfiguration of where the parking goes. More efficient flow, you know, the garage space.
Yes. To, to allow people to, you know, they gotta back out of that garage to turn around. That parking lot gets pretty full on, on any given day, so, and the lines are all, I mean, you can barely see the lot.
Well, that's kind of intentional, 'cause I was waiting to get this going before I went ahead and recreated it again this year. 'Cause we're gonna.
It, it.
Right, you just have to clean the whole area up, repaint it, and get it all clean slate so we can line it up, so that when people pull in from the road, they can see exactly where they need to park.
Yeah, the drive. So, so this yellow line is the proposed edge of pavement?
Tom, what's that yellow line that?
Right, yes.
Yes, oh yeah, you're absolutely, that's, yep.
So, yeah, we'd be adding two spaces up in a room or, so there'll be a total of four up there.
Yep.
That yellow line is rough.
Sure.
The applicant did submit a formal plan that shows it with survey specificity.
So it's this one right here.
Yeah.
The drawings that we submitted.
Yeah.
These are the drawings.
Can we pass those? Do you wanna see those? Check them. They have them.
Okay, great.
You have the four keys of your handle?
No.
I sent them to you. Digital.
Yeah, they, they came through. Actually, we didn't print the, uh, the aerial photos, but the, the drawing too.
Yeah, you saw my aerial photo, right? You saw the aerial photo. Do you need one?
I need one.
Why, I need excellent, you know? You guys gonna, yeah. You're gonna have to, but you're gonna have to actually, not socially distance.
You, have you seen average?
I have. I can't print it out.
So this is what I think you wanna do.
Break the photos.
This, this is your application, correct? Which you gave us.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's, that's, uh, an expansion of parking, significant expansion of parking. Which, which is fine, but it's a sensitive area, 'cause you are near the rip, draw and dome, so. But you'd have to work all that through all those.
Well, there is a, a, what was that called? It's, uh.
Article four, section eight.
Oh, okay. It's, you're right that we're dealing with the setback to the Kennamuck River there. And, uh, generally, that would be a two hundred fifty foot setback, but under eight, six, four, exceptions to setbacks and dimensional standards. It's under eight, six, four subsection two, it says relaxed setbacks in resource protection districts. And so it says structures, roads, and parking spaces are specifically allowed in the resource protection district shall be set back just one hundred feet. So I'm looking at, you probably pulled it up. And then if we also look down to subsection four, that deals with driveways within that shoreline zone. And we would classify, you know, some of the expansion as driveway, because it's leading, you know, it's a driveway to that, that avenue. So we would be working through that portion of the, of the ordinance, because I think it's relevant.
You to the chair? The gentleman is right, Tom's right, if you wouldn't mind if I call you Tom?
Please you.
Okay. Tom's right, it's an hundred foot setback, but you're not in the resource protection district. You're in the shoreline overlay district.
Okay.
Okay, because, uh, the resource protection district in the Kennamuck River is the flood plain, which is that area behind the building, as you probably know. The flood plain's not going anywhere in the plan. And, uh, the actual, it's just within the flood plain, which is one of the reasons why that would make, and, 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 and expansion, 'cause we encouraged her to put parking lots back, but that was flood plain, we couldn't do it. This is shoreline overlay district, and the setback from the end of the edge of the we- of the river is one hundred feet. So it's the same thing, just a technical, technicality there.
So there's no, there's no, we, we don't have to worry about a distinction between the R P and N S O here?
Uh, I don't think so, no. Unless I, they, the flood plain's not the lane of the plane, unless the, that flood plain's going into the, it's part of that parking here, I don't know. That would be one of the things we, we would want to know, where that flood plain was in relation to that, 'cause I've got a flood plain map. And I think, I think you did a.
I, yeah, we had the, we had this.
I think, I think you did it.
You have that one in the packet?
No.
Oh, is it in the packet?
It was in the packet that we submitted with the ten copies.
And can we, can we take into account too that there is, the, the, the fact of the building is in between that and the bank?
The what?
Right?
The thing?
The building itself, not the building.
Yeah, and, yeah, the building is a non-conformity. It is non-conformity, in that it's in the ship, it's within a hundred feet of the, of the shoreline zone, which is why Jim Nagle, when he gave a building permit for, um, for the school, uh, was able to allow for the, for, um, the rehabilitation and actually, uh, an expansion, although it was within that, that hundred foot setback. As long as it didn't increase the non-conformity in terms of area and in terms of distance to the river. And I'm just looking for a point, I, I don't.
Well, you're right, Jens, I think your point was the house is closer to the Kennamuck River than the proposed driveway pavement. Right now, it's just, we're driving, you know.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yep.
Yep.
So, so the question would be, is that, is that lot, eh, parking space numbered eighteen absolutely necessary?
Yeah.
In other words, as far as reordnance goes, we wouldn't need it.
That's, that's, yeah, essentially my question.
Yeah.
You probably went through this last time you did. There's no room for parking on the north side of the building?
No, there is a driveway there.
Driveway, yeah, but.
Yeah.
That driveway goes on, the driveway is a property.
Right on the line.
Yeah.
We were originally gonna put a parking lot behind.
Yeah.
But then we heard that the farmhouse was coming up for sale possibly, so we decided to buy that. We had that sh- we had that flood plain issue.
Right, yeah.
'Cause it was the Kennamuck River, it's a non-contour zone. So. Okay, and you see that hundred foot shoreline setback on this one.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
So, but it's quite valid, isn't it? Okay, well, I think the first thing we need to do is go out there at six o'clock.
Okay.
Need a motion.
I'll make that, I'll make that motion.
You could see on the.
On the twenty fifth, Rich?
Yes.
Could I suggest five forty five, so I have plenty of time?
Yeah, I, I think that's fair. I think that's a good idea. So we have a motion, I need a second for five forty five.
Who, who, who moved it?
I'll second it.
Jens, Jens made motion, Susan seconds it for five forty five on the twenty fifth at the Wellness Center. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye, for her.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye, aye.
Tom? Roger?
Lauren, aye.
Yep, it's unanimous.
I hope you're. I've sitting that long for so.
Yeah.
What about table, we get, since we scheduled the site walk, do we, do we still, is this appropriate venue to make a determination of the completeness of the application?
Usually, we wait until after.
After the site walk, okay, that's just.
And the, the claim would have, has to see the site, determine what, they need things, or they have.
Yep.
Because the requirements otherwise would, could be severe. You saw that, you saw that, that checklist.
When any waivers requested, anyway, were they?
Not at this point, I think. Not at this point, but I'm sure they would. Well, we almost.
I would imagine they'll at least have a lot of.
Do we just lose Susan?
Yeah.
Yeah, the batteries, battery just shut.
You almost made it.
It was her, and she was always proposing the zoning ordinance change.
Yeah, and I have that number. She said that the number was incorrect, it was, it says a hundred, it was, uh, in our document, but it's actually.
Yeah, one more question, when you, when you mentioned waivers and potentials, assuming there'll be waivers, do you need waivers of?
Submission requirements.
In the, to be a complete application?
Yes.
Okay.
You can make.
Waivers that have no.
That are.
Permanent information about.
Yeah, if you look at the application, the application covers everything.
Right.
And, and you're given options, the same options for everything. Yeah, we're gonna have it, no, we don't wanna have it, yeah, we'd rather have it, we, and you just look on through it, say, what about this, this, and this?
That's what we did.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
See you, all right?
One more thing, I will send you a note.
And those guys left their plans, I love you guys, gonna hold on to them.
Is that the Ramens?
Yeah, they might get, you know. They don't want that loss.
They might, they might need those.
Yeah.
Okay, under the next item, uh, land use ordinance amendments, a proposal to reduce the rear setback requirements for movable structures of less than one hundred and twenty square feet in areas to twenty five feet from the rear lot lines in all residential districts. Right now, in the R four, it is.
Fifty feet.
It's fifty feet in the R four, and it's twenty five everywhere else. Susan has asked us to consider reducing that to twenty five feet everywhere.
Of course, the irony is the setback for, uh, the setback for any structure in the R one, two, and three is twenty five feet.
Right, so it will, it will then become.
It will only affect the R four district essentially.
Yeah. But it, it will make it.
Simplifies it.
Simplify it throughout the entire land use ordinance. It'll make it equal to everybody. Well, but I think the, I think that Tad has a couple of good arguments for not doing so.
What would they be again?
We're gonna let Tad make the comment.
Well, the only, the, the comment I was making, I, I made before about this was, and I think I couldn't even know, was that, uh, the concern on this is that the planning board. Originally put a fifty foot setback for the rear for the R four district. It was to support, I believe, and I could be wrong in this, 'cause from what I've been able to read, was to support the concept that the R four district, one of, one of the values of being a property owner and living in the R four was to feel the elbow room and spaciousness and being alone. And that you couldn't see your neighbor, that's one of the, one of the, one of the objectives. Whether fifty feet is enough to do that, or what would be a hundred feet between buildings and rear, you know, is, is, is always determined by, you know, what the vegetation cover is. 'Cause we've seen places, we get a hundred feet, and you can see right through it, and you know your neighbors. But I think their intent was to create more of a rural character by making it harder to see your neighbor, and that's why they, they did that. It does restrict the back of the property. If you do wanna put a woodshed in the back, you have to meet the same standard as a principal building. And Jamie can probably attest to this, Jens can attest to this. In many towns, there are different setbacks for a principal structure and accessory structure. Where an accessory structure has less of a setback requirement than a principal structure. So the, a garage can be closer to the property line than the house can be. Or a woodshed, or a tool shed, or one of those, uh, Home Depot sheds can be, doesn't have to be a hundred feet from the road, it can be, uh, usually, like, front yard, but, you know, it can be much closer to the side yard, because it's less of an impact on the neighbor than, than it doesn't affect, like, the air, all those good English common law land use things. So, I mean, there's, there's arguments on both sides of the, the equation here. And, um, the way it's written right now, it will only apply in the R four district, so we might get blowback on that. I asked Jim if he wanted to, to do accessory dwelling, you know, or not accessory dwelling, sorry, accessory structure setbacks, he said, oh, gosh, he groaned. So it would be up to you guys, but this might be the, this might be the entry, the entry candidate for what was starting accessory setbacks, accessory structure setbacks.
So I would make, I mean, ultimately, I would make the discussion solely to the R four, or, you know, propose the ordinance amendment only in the R four district. I don't know how the language in your, in your description came about.
I think that's.
Susan.
But essentially.
And Susan cooking it up together.
Yeah, but essentially, you know, the other question I would have is what, what is a, to me, a movable structure is a, is a trailer?
Yeah.
Like, no, like a living trailer.
Yeah, the only thing is that the restriction is a hundred and fifty square feet.
Well, no, there, one of the instruct, and, uh, one of the things that you had in there was, is that it is not inhabitable, so it would rule that down.
I, I get, I get, and my point is, a movable structure is a little bit of a misnomer.
Okay, yeah.
In that a living trailer is about the one thing I could think of, that it would be a movable structure.
Yeah.
A woodshed, while movable, is not intended to move, right?
It's staying there until fall time.
So I would, right, or somebody comes along and says that's within the setback and it shouldn't be, and you tear it then, because it doesn't have much value.
Yeah.
So I would, I mean, just simply state for an accessory structure of less than a hundred feet. You know, in, in the description of the, of the change.
Yeah. That's a good point.
But I, I think that, uh, one of the reasons why, and I can't speak for Susan, but movable was used, was because if you have accessory, means you could have a foundation that would be putting, a foundation is impermanent, you can get.
Right, she had, she had originally started off saying impermanent, and I don't know why she moved it to.
Well, 'cause everything's impermanent, it's all gonna fall down.
Oh, gonna burn one of these days.
But even if you did a small shed, even though it might not be a poured concrete foundation, there's gonna be some sort of foundation structure to it.
Right, yeah.
I think that's where the, I, I think that's where MUBEC comes in.
Where what comes in?
MUBEC, May Uniform Building and Energy Code. Because MUBEC doesn't recognize, um, uh, it does not recognize buildings without a foundation, a, a poured foundation or a set foundation, except for, as you say, trailers. Mobile homes are a different story with them, they do not regulate mobile homes, that is HOE that does that. So, um, but it's a very good point, but the, so Jamie's proposing that you would, we drop the movable, we're just making an accessory structure, no more than a hundred and fifty square feet.
Hundred.
Hundred, sorry.
Hundred, hundred and twenty.
Where does it say movable?
In the description.
Proposal to reduce rear setback requirements for movable structures.
It doesn't, it doesn't say it in the definition.
No, it, it says it in, in the description of the topic today.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it doesn't say it in.
It doesn't say it in the.
The proposed version.
What, what does it say for accessory structures?
So, I, I think this opened up a lot of discussion, because accessory structure can be a garage.
Yeah, yeah.
Sure is.
What section are you looking at, Rich?
Oh, I'm just looking.
But less than, but less than a hundred square feet.
It's on page six in the definitions.
You're ultimately not gonna get.
Oh, that's true.
That's twelve by eight.
A structure which is customarily incidental and subordinate to the principal user's properties.
It's basically, it's one of those tool sheds on the particles.
Twelve by eight, ten by ten, yeah. So it's really, I mean. Shit, small shed type of.
Yeah, that makes it difficult, yeah, so it won't be, I'm, I'm actually thinking a, a three or four car garage.
Yeah.
Right there, which would be an accessory, but.
Right.
It, that, that's a little, that has a huge impact, but. That, that's a little, that has a huge impact. But 100 square feet, that, that minimizes it a lot.
It could be a she shed, it could be a tool shed, it could be any number of things. Usually, but, you know, it's a small, it's a small shed, basically. So we allow sheds to be posted to the property line in the R4, the rear property line order. Not asking for areas from 35 foot side setback. You don't have to make a decision now. The warrant's closed for, for the 15th, so.
When, when's Tom meeting?
July 15.
Do, do they know yet?
What, what, the format's gonna be?
Format's gonna be town meeting.
Jim Dazian.
Jim Dazian, weird. And Rich is gonna set up a really cool remote room in here for the overflow.
I am.
Yeah.
Lose to me.
Oh, I didn't tell you about that. Rich, I'm sorry, Rich. Keith launched it on me yesterday.
Keith, Keith has his own set of issues. I'm glad we're not still on the counter. Oh, well, we're not.
Yeah, Keith. No, Keith, Keith had said that he was impressed with what we've done.
Yeah.
What you had done here and was ready to, to employ it as a way of, he was gonna get a big screen TV, um, I hope he was gonna pay for it, and put it in here and through closed circuit somehow, use this as a overflow room for the town meeting.
Yeah.
Have we ever had overflow need?
Well, the problem is we would have overflow if we are fully socially. I mean, you suppose that 36 square feet, unless you're.
Oh, it was pretty close when we had that meeting last year with all the rockets. Remember, Rich, you were there, right?
Yeah, but, I'm, just the selectmen and everybody could move all the way to the other side of the gym. There'd be plenty of room. They don't have to sit eight feet away from the bleachers.
I'm not sure we'll have a huge turnout.
I think a lot of people will avoid it.
Yeah, I don't.
My guess is it'll.
My wife won't be coming. I'll tell you that right now.
I can't go with it. Although when you see the budget, you know.
Huh? No, she won't be coming.
I actually don't know what the budget is because I think there's still RSU stuff going on. I may be wrong in that.
So at any rate, that's, that's something that she wants us to look at. We can put that on the list to, to work through and consider. I don't think it, if we agree with it, I don't think it would take a lot to make the ordinance in compliance and then we can hold a public hearing and have it all done.
Yeah, agreed. What's, what's the agenda look like for the 25th, Ted?
Uh, about to send this one tonight. I mean, uh, well, very honestly, I think, um, I don't think, we gotta be confirmed with the last two that came in. They're not prepared to be deemed compliant.
Yeah.
Um. I think you're gonna be, I'm gonna, I'm gonna see if I can get the, the review done with DMR. Uh, but I think the real issue is what, what, what we're gonna do with the other one. I, I don't have anything else in the hopper right this morning.
Oh, good, I'll be long.
Uh, yeah, I need to rest.
Because I don't, I don't know where he, he got the 10 days in the ordinance.
There it is.
Our procedure is 14 days.
It's 14 days. It isn't 10 days, it's 14 days. It's up to the board. Your procedure is 14 days, but this is an ongoing application.
Right, oh, no, I meant, I meant, uh, the guy from Wellness Center.
No, he's one.
He said it was 10 days.
No, it's, it's one, it's one.
Yeah, the, you know, we, we can cut her some slack on getting us the stuff. She just needs to understand that getting us the stuff doesn't mean you bring it in on the 25th.
Yeah, well, I can't, I can't respond to that when, when that happens, so. It's just like Paul Roten, I dropped off his stuff today. And I'm in the midst of trying to juggle 100 different things. And who are you going? Which turned out so civil, I can't believe it.
Did he, did he come in and give you an application?
Who?
Billy?
No, yes, no, he's not.
Talking about Stilson?
He, he's, he's gonna come to us. He wants to put in a 40 foot wide pole barn at the back end of that property. And he said he was gonna, he, he got one today for 480 feet on the left-hand side. But he plans on asking for a much bigger one on the back end of the property so that he can put his two trucks in there. He can't put his two trucks in before we make.
He's looking to put all his trucks in.
He can't have all of his trucks.
Well, what he's going to be doing with that is strategy, in case you didn't quite catch it, is he is going to be asking for an expansion of his complement of equipment. And he's gonna make the sound or the noise issue by having them indoors. Starting up and warming up.
He can.
Doors and then driving them out, you know, boom.
Right, so he, so he's thinking that he'll meet the, he'll be able to meet the noise ordinance and be able to get the contract for the R2.
Yep.
Considering that.
Negation is the issue here, isn't it?
Yeah.
He could do that. I would encourage, I, I encourage him to put it out near the, the front of the, of the lot so it's even farther away and make it a drive.
Yeah.
Which would even reduce, you know, one of the things that I think Dewey had mentioned at that meeting that, that was important is the thing that drives everybody crazy on backup homes.
Yeah.
And those are the one things you can't control noise ordinance because it's a critical safety. It's exempt from noise, noise ordinance.
Well, e- even Dewey was thinking, you know, that he's got that pole barn up, that's gonna block a lot of that noise.
It's gonna block the noise.
And then, and then I think, do I think that Dewey and Stacy will be happy? I think they'll be, they'll be satisfied with it.
Well, anybody want to take off tonight?
Yeah, really.
No.
We're on loop.
I have the cameras on.
Give us a.
Okay, so the other, the other item is a proposal to establish uniform construction and dimensional standards for commercial driveways in section 5.2.
I have not had a chance at all.
That's okay. It's one of the things that we're gonna be looking.
But I think that's one of the things we have to do.
To make them uniform.
Right.
So that everybody has the same standard.
How are they not?
Because we don't have any standard.
We don't have any.
We don't have any standard for driveway.
For driveway and.
A commercial.
If you look at five, section 5.1, it's the first thing on driveways in our ordinance. Dan, uh.
Leishman?
No, Leishman. Went through a very complicated procedure of establishing what the, what the skew angle, the, the curve radius, the width of driveways going onto Route 1 and Route 111 should be. And had them at a width of 24 or 28 feet.
Yep.
But that's it, the width. There was nothing about what the, what the actual dimensions of the driveway should be for a commercial property.
There is nothing in there that's for commercial property.
And it's.
It's, it specifically says residential.
Yeah.
In the standards.
It is, it's nuts and, and when we.
It could have been his attempt to limit commercial property.
It could have been. But.
Well, he did, well, he did do that.
There's no standard for driveway in the ordinance you can't have.
Well, there were, yeah, there were, there were some very serious, there's some overkill in some of those design standards. You know, I think, Jamie, you would, you would definitely, 35 feet? Come on.
Oh, yeah, that's.
That's ridiculous. Yeah, so there's, I mean, that's what we're gonna look at.
Three lengths.
Getting something like that taken care of. Okay, and then we're gonna have to tackle the R4 at some point.
Yeah, we have to do that, Charlie.
Now, Jens, the, the next meeting, do you wanna show up here? Or do you wanna do, do the Zoom?
No.
If, if, if you can come down on the 25th, I'll bring my, my equipment down and I'll bring the plugs this.
I'll show up here. I mean, that's my preference. I, I don't really.
Why is it?
Yeah, you can zoom in.
I don't think I'll want to. You guys are gonna be here.
Good, I'll keep you company though.
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll come down and set, set up and I'll bring my plugs this time so the batteries come on. I can't believe that both of those batteries were fully charged when I left the house. They lasted two hours.
Especially with the video going.
It's the video.
The video, she was up there. Is that your, is that your preference? Is you, your brothers to be in person or?
I found, I ended up liking being at home doing the Zoom.
Oh, yeah.
It wasn't bad.
The, the one benefit of, I mean, Ted, I'll be very honest. Your material that you send in a Word document, my laptop at home doesn't have the Microsoft things on it.
The UIPDS.
So. Yeah.
Okay, sorry, I will do that.
But that being said, where I was, where I was going with that is that if I had, it was nice the other day when I was doing the Zoom because I could reference all that stuff. You know, here you're sort of limited to what you bring.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, I guess I could bring my laptop and pull into the Wi-Fi, but, um, you know, that's.
It would have been easier. I, I found that during the Zoom meetings, I could immediately pull all those documents up and it was a lot easier than dealing with this, this mountain of paper.
Right, right.
But seriously, I mean, it's easy to access.
That is the one benefit.
That's great.
Yeah, it is.
I like paper myself, but.
I like paper for several reasons.
I brought everything up on my, on my laptop and I thought, okay, because it, because I, I, uh, I'm using a Microsoft Exchange account so I could just go out and log in and look at everything. And the minute I do, it pops up on the screen because I plugged in with the whiteboard.
It's too late, maybe good type of fiction. It's too late.
Throw it in the towel? Yeah, no, I mean, I'm, I'm with you. I, I prefer the paper to read and review things. But if there's other things you're looking to get to, then, you know, it's nice to have that resource.
Yeah, and the drawings, you can pull them up and you can expand and contract them any way you want to. You know, if you can't do a scale.
That's fine.
So at any rate, like, you know, Jens and I will be here on the 25th. If you guys wanna come, great. If not.
Zoom here. You can be here, I'll be here.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna come because it makes it easier for, for other people. It doesn't matter to me one way or the other.
Are applicants gonna come? Or should I have the applicants come attend the Zoom meeting? I don't know if we can do it either. I can't, I'm not sure we can do a hybrid here.
We could tell, we can tell the applicants if they want to do it on Zoom, then they have, they have to notify us in advance. If they want, you know, if they wanna come in person, they can come in person.
Yeah.
Or would, would it be easier to just tell them all, no, you come and show up in the library?
Or else you come to Zoom.
Yeah, we'll Zoom and you guys show up.
In your masks.
Yeah, in your masks.
Yeah, see, that's the other thing.
See, that's.
Zoom, you don't have to use these bloody.
Yeah, yeah, that, that, that's a good advantage.
It is a big advantage.
And, and for Amy, for instance, she can pop up that stuff on, on the computer and we all can see it. I did that, I did a Zoom meeting on, on Wednesday in which we had to deal with a lot of documents. And the executive director I was dealing with, she was just popping the stuff up on the screen and we all could see it. It was great.
Oh, yeah?
We discussed it and we're accepting some of this and all this stuff.
Yeah, it is.
And I actually jettisoned myself from the, from the Eastern Trail Management District order of officers. I'm no longer a president or vice president.
All right, huh?
I love doing it, but man, it's just too much.
We need a motion to adjourn.
Show me.
You're done. 9:31, uh, 9:37.